All right, let's see if we can get the computers up. We're up. Good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, June 27th, 2025. It's now 9:00 a.m. We're here for a special session of Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, we have no minutes. Public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Anybody wish to speak? Being none, I'll close with a public testimony. Nothing under old business, new business, action item B, fiscal year 2526 budget. Clay, you want to start us off?
We're Judge Commissioners. Have no idea why I'm here, so I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, in your budget, you were asking for another person and you were asking for some increases, I believe, in a few line items.
Yes, we have an additional unfunded mandate from the state of the juvenile diversion program. Every juvenile that comes into the court must be addressed by somebody who's appointed to be the administrator of the juvenile diversion program. They sit down with the parents and the juvenile to come up with a plan that helps this child not be charged. They can't accept a plea. They can't enter a plea. If they want diversion, they must be given diversion under most circumstances. It takes a person to complete the agreement between the parents, the child, and the court. Then they have to monitor it throughout the process to ensure it's being completed successfully. If not, then they may come to the court, which is me, in order to ask for a modification or even to change the plan if necessary, doing everything we can to keep the juvenile from becoming a criminal. It can't be, the information can't be put into Odyssey, so we have to track it outside of Odyssey on a spreadsheet. Nobody can have access to it, and as long as they complete it successfully, it's immediately expunged from anybody's record, including ours. I think it's a very worthwhile program. The state has mandated it. That's what we're going to do. When I talked to you a couple of years ago about this, after I'd gone through the training, I told you about the state funding that was available for personnel in order to accomplish this task. I don't know if we ever applied for any of those grants. I told you about some federal grants that were available to the Department of Justice. I don't know if we've ever applied for any of those, but there are methods to help with the personnel coming in in order to achieve that. Our statistics continue to rise. The number of cases coming in, the number of cases that we're completing are going up. I think we're nearly at double what they were last year, the amount of, can nobody hear me? I'm sorry. You know, I have to tell people to do this in my courtroom all the time. You'd think I'd learn. The number of, the amount of money that we're bringing in has gone up as well. I don't like talking about money, Judge. You know that. I generally don't. I don't, I don't look at the money as being a success for a court. A success for a court is taking care of our community. That's what I look at. That's why I'm asking for the person. I only want a part-time person now. The number of Spanish-only speakers is continuing to rise. I've got children translating for their parents on a case that involves the child. Luckily, I have somebody there that can understand most of what they say. I can understand some of what they say, but I should have a clerk in there that can speak Spanish fluently and can ensure the translation is correct, so the child isn't telling him the judge promised to go ahead and dismiss his dad. All you have to do is say okay. That's what I'm most worried about, is something like that happening. It hasn't so far.
We just approved a company to do translations for us. Genie, yeah, Genie, and it's supposed to be available to everybody.
Okay, when? And when are we going to get the information now?
We just approved it, the last meeting.
So we're kind of putting it together still?
Yeah, they're putting it together. Joel Littlefield was leading it. He's the one that brought it to the court, and it's supposed to be where the sheriff can dial it up or the jail and whoever, so.
And Judge Littlefield currently is handling a case that I dealt with where the gentleman did not speak English and his child was translating for him. It was a civil case, and we were able to do that because it was a civil case. Everything else should have a certified translator there, so I'm glad that we've taken that step. It's one less thing I have to worry about the person being qualified to do. I figured it was going to be a pretty long period of looking because of what I was requiring in an additional person. Now that that is no longer one of the things that I need, it won't be as difficult to find somebody who can learn how to do that job. But somebody has to cover when the girls are out. I mean, they're refusing to go to the doctor, refusing to take sick time, refusing to take vacation because of dumping their caseload on the other clerk. And these are two ladies who have worked so hard that they've become, they've gained their certification in the areas that they are in within my, within my court, whether it's civil with Ms. Weiniger or it's criminal with Ms. Lopez. It's not something that is done by a lot of people. Very few people have gained their certifications. They've gone the extra step to do so, and they're now working on their masters, which means they'll be able to handle each other's work as well. But nobody can handle all the work that's coming through that court right now, and our, our community just continues to grow, as you know. It's going to simply get busier. It's not going to go the other way, and I really don't want to get caught with our pants down if we can help it.
Clay, do you have, you have stats showing your increase in caseloads or anything? I don't see it here.
Well, I don't know exactly what you have.
I've got, through the first six months, I printed the revenues and, let's see, where did I do with it? All right. Clay's revenue through June 30th, so through, well, not quite the end of the month, but they always, if you print one in the middle of the month, it's, it gives the end of the date, the end of the month date, I think. Is that right, Mary? So whatever date the last posting was, the revenue was $79,434.84. The same is Carrie Cruz is 76,168, and he's got two people, and all he's asking for is two people. He does the same diversion you're doing. I don't, those are just facts.
I'm handling all the diversion within precinct four, including what happens in the cities.
And he's doing the same thing in common.
I don't know what he's doing. I don't compare myself to other judges. I look at what we have going. I look at what we've done in the past, what we're looking at, what we're looking at in the future, and what the needs are for the court. That's all I look at. You know that. That's why I'm asking for a person.
Commissioner?
Judge, for the, for the new guy, so you said that this became a requirement two years ago, or there was just grants available two years ago?
As of two years ago is when the training started. It became effective mandatorily January 1st of 2025. My policy went into effect and was posted on OCA probably in November, October, November, in that timeframe. We waited as long as we could to see if there was going to be a county plan. We haven't developed one of those as of yet, but every court is required to have a plan.
So, so give me, give me an idea, because if it started in January, so you, you have some, some kind of change, right? Something you now do as of January that you didn't do before? What is that?
Every juvenile that comes in on any Class C violation, regardless of what it is, if the offense was committed before their 17th birthday, a plea is not taken and they're offered diversion immediately. So they walk up to the criminal desk and they're offered diversion. If they want that, then my criminal clerk gets with them and their parents to develop a plan. That plan is put together, and then it comes to the court for approval, and then we'll go back to the, the parents for them to enact as long as the prosecuting attorney doesn't have an objection, as long as the child hasn't unsuccessfully completed one in the past year, just a few things that will keep that from occurring. But the workload is there, and it's going to continue to grow. We've got a couple of them in place now, and it's going to do nothing but grow. Now, remember, most of what we're dealing with right now are things that occurred in 2024, so they're still not under that, that umbrella of requirement, but now those are going to start coming in as well.
So the building of the plan is what's new to you?
Yes. Yes, the mandate and having a specific person assigned over that in order to monitor it, where I can't. If I monitored, I'd have to recuse myself from hearing the case.
Just out of curiosity, is that 10 things a month or 1,000 things a month that you build plans on?
It's like anything else. It depends on how many children do something, how many children get caught doing something. It's going to pick up when school starts. That's where a lot of it comes from. So it'll come out of the school, it'll come to us. If it doesn't successfully get, you know, resolved within the school system itself, because they have a lot that they can do with the kids themselves.
Thank you.
Judge, how much has your, how much has your caseload went up in the past two years? Or over this, this year alone, how much has it went up?
Okay, so I do have 24 and 25 here. Let me see if I can get that. Those are fees. Okay, caseload activity. And it looks like she planted or just printed the totals. All right, so new and opened caseloads, and it looks like total caseloads, as of last year were 1,945, and we closed 1,248. The closure, I think, is the success rate that I look at. That's the statistic I look at to ensure that we're moving forward on everything and people aren't getting tied up in the system for long periods of time. So far.
That, that number, though, is that just somebody gets a speeding ticket and they handle it by mail? Is that in the count?
Yeah, okay, so.
Is that, is that, what's the data?
Small claims are like 5,062. We have, you go through the caseload, the class C misdemeanors, you know, 623, 473 that are closed. That was 20, 25. That's this year so far. Debt claims, 181 new, 177 closed. Evictions, 62 new, 53 closed. Juvenile cases, we've got two that are closed with no new coming through, which is actually a good thing. We got out of school, which has helped.
But that, watch the time period on that. That's since September 1st.
Yeah, but see.
Went through a full school.
Now you're asking me something I can't give you accurate details on. You're, if you're, if you're coming back to what I'm talking about originally, which is the diversion, you will not see diversion statistics. I don't have them in front of me because the computer's not going to spit them out. They're not a stat, not unless they go to court.
So you're asking for a part-time person, correct?
That's all.
And so would this person be completely dedicated to just the diversion activity?
No, no, no. My, my chief clerk, who is certified as the one that's handling the diversion, will be the backfill for the two ladies who are already there. So it will be a part-time person in every sense of the word, where they can do both things as far as taking money, be able to keep my office open for 10 hours a day, five days a week, instead of what it currently is.
So it'll be doing probably a little more of the administrative support of the other, of the other two.
As well as for court. They'll be able to take time off without interfering with the court docket. If they get sick, they'll actually be able to go to the doctor or take a day off, which is, would be kind of nice. I've watched them not go to the doctor because they're afraid of leaving the other person there. They know what happens when one of them is gone. The court basically comes to a grinding halt.
Judge, I don't have any, any questions for you that haven't already been asked at this time except for, do you, do you know roughly the population of your precinct? Don't worry, if, I don't know either, that's why I'm asking. Don't worry if you, if you don't know.
I did when I talked to Judge Stovall last time, but I don't know if you, do you remember the number I gave you? It, it's, it's pretty dramatic, and then the number of houses that are going in with the muds and so forth, you know as well as I do. It's just booming.
You cover Quinlan, Tewahqunee.
I cover, I cover South Hunt County from 69 South.
Gotcha. And that, that was my only question. I do want to commend your clerks for their hard work in getting those certifications. That's demonstrated dedication.
I'm extremely proud of them, that they've gone to the extra steps of ensuring they got the, they took the courses, they studied for the exam, they took the exam, which is not an easy exam, and they passed it. And now they're working on their masters. It's, it's not, I'm telling you, it's not about me. It is truly about them.
The grant you talked about, the grants you talked about, we don't have a grant writer. And most of the grants that are, all the grants that I know of that we're getting, the departments seek those grants. That's another one of those things we need to talk about going forward. We do need a grant writer. The grant writer would probably pay for itself, but we don't, we don't have a, we don't have that position right now, so.
Well, you and I have talked about it. I've, I've applied for and obtained numerous grants over my career, but I don't have time to do the work, and only the Commissioners' Court can approve a grant.
I understand, but say, all the paperwork and all, we don't know your job, we don't know how to always fill out the applications, so it's, as far as I know, every department does their own.
Judge, if we don't approve a part-time person for you, what, what work is going to go undone next year? Because obviously, I would like to have more people, but we don't always, we're facing a very tough year this year.
I know.
Of managing money, because we're running a $2.5 million deficit right now. We'd like to get that budgeted out. So we're going to have to be making some tough decisions, and honestly, we're going to have to just prioritize things. What is the absolutely have-tos that we have to do? What are the wants? And then what would be the extras? But my question is, if you, if you, I know you want another person, and that, and that may be justifiable, but if we can't fund that, what's going to go undone if we can't?
Nothing. It's just a matter of how hard and how long the two clerks I have are going to have to work. The work will not go undone. The community will be taken care of. It's because of their hard work and the increase in their hard work that it's been done up to now. A part-time person is going to do two things. It's going to alleviate that. It's going to keep us from having to close the, because the way the courtroom is set up and the, and the fact that there's a security door between the entrance and the court. When we're in court, we don't even have a security monitor in there for our constables to be able to see what's going on. There's one in my office, but there's not one in the courtroom where they are. So we, we don't know when someone comes in, but the courtroom is locked down because of it. And unless somebody calls, they're not going to get through that locked door. There's too much going on beyond it. Too much that can jeopardize this county beyond that door to allow it to remain unlocked for people to come and go as they wish. So that's a big one. This court isn't accessible other than if I were to start broadcasting it on my, on my YouTube page, I guess it'd be accessible then, but it really should be accessible always when we're open. And then no one's getting helped at the front counter when this happens. We put a sign up that says, hey, we'll be back here in about 20, 30 minutes after we're done with whatever we're working on, and we'll take care of you. Some people come in that courthouse between 7:00 and 8:00, which is good, that we're not in court then, and they come in at noon in order to file things because they have to go to work or they can't afford to take time off with their daycare. And that's one of the reasons that I footed the expense and put in video and audio for people to be able to appear remotely, and it has increased the number of people who are participating in their own defense and/or prosecution of the cases. Instead of having local counsel only that's coming, we can have the counselors that were hired by the company out of state appear to give us the information we need. We're able to close more cases that way, not as many continuances, things like that. But the person is going to allow it to remain open, the people to be taken care of always. If someone's gone, it's going to run as though they're still there, and it will prepare this court for when somebody inevitably leaves, whether it's to retire or to move on to greener pastors or whatever it might be. Inevitably, it happens. I do everything I can to keep my two clerks extremely happy because I realize just how valuable they are, and I will continue to do that. So nothing will go undone, but I, I can see the overtime budget going up more, things of that nature, because the caseload continues to grow.
What kind of money are you looking for for this part-time employee?
Just, I would imagine whatever is normally paid. I'm not, I don't have a number in the, in my brain. I don't know how much the clerks get paid. I don't make that any of my business. In fact, I've been told by Judge Stovall to never worry about the employees and the pay, so I don't.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Clay. All right, thank you, sir.
I had one.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious, I was just looking at some of the ancillaries. For the most part, there's no major differences. In training, you, you have a bump up to 5,000. Last year was 3,500, but you've only spent 500 this year. Is there something happening on training?
The, the training budget, I, I insist on training, which is why it consistently goes up because of cost of living factors. Then the first thing I do is look at all the, the training I can possibly get for my folks that's free. And if I can find it free, we don't pay for it in order to, and that includes myself. But where 20 hours are required for training for a judge, I seek 100, 120 hours because I want to know as much as I can to be able to help the people the best that I can. And I expect the same thing from the, the clerks, which is why they are now certified in their positions.
But in the, in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, you don't expect this year to spend $3,000 in training, right?
Well, we got some more training coming up. I, I know that one of my clerks got removed from training. She was going to go to for clerk school because something happened where someone else is going to be gone. So we had to cancel it, and we're trying to get her rescheduled for another school. Then we have the other clerk, then we have the legislative updates coming up. We have one, two more conferences that I will be going to. One, everything will be paid for except for transportation and mills by the state. That's a DUI conference. The other one I go to every year is the mental health conference. That is, usually it's 12 to 15 hours during the week that comes up every year, and I try to do it for free when I can, and they, sometimes they offer it for free. They offer grants that I'll put in for.
So you budget based on what the cost is, and occasionally you get it for free?
There you go. I, I base on, I budget based on what I believe it's going to be, and then I do everything I can not to spend the money.
Judge, I do have one more question. You mentioned that when you are, when your clerks are back working the administrative stuff, you have to close the courtroom with people coming in. You just, you put a sign up. Is there, is there, could that be solved with another camera that would help them just monitor the court, the room better or the reception area? I'm not, I'm not sure how you're set up.
Well, I, I think if, if we, the camera is going to allow the constable to know if there's an emergency that he needs to respond to, either up front or outside the building. And that includes protecting the other side of the house, which I'm not going to go into who that is. But there is a reason that, that they're doing that. Now, right now, there's only two monitors, one for the clerks and one for my office, so that we can monitor any time that we're in the office, what's going on around the building. They've been asking for a monitor to be tied into, that's just a slave monitor, to be put in the courtroom so that they too can monitor what's going on. If someone came in, they could go up front to let them in. They have to actually do a security check before they can come through that door. So that would help as far as getting them in, but if they're coming in to do some other business with the court, it won't do anything. And most of the folks that are going to come to court are already there, just so you know.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Sandy, can I have a follow-up to Steve's question? Is this probably in the $30 to $35 an hour range? More?
Our part-timers, my game, are 15 to 20.
15 to 20? So no special skills required for the role?
No, they'll be trained in the office by the ladies that are currently there. Very few people are going to actually know. I mean, I, maybe I get lucky and find someone who's done it before, but I don't think so.
So you're talking about a $20,000 part-time kind of?
Possibly, yeah, because they can't work, you know, more than 25 hours a week.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Uh, thank you.
Gary, just so you, so you know, since you're a newbie, all the, all the JPs and, and law enforcement also have special funds that are coming from fees, and, and the, in the JPs, they have a technology fund and a security fund, two separate things that are generated by fees from the court. And then they have the DDC fund, which is, you know, if you go get a speeding ticket and they let you go to driver's education or whatever it's called, then they pay that fee, and that goes into their DDC fund. The DDC fund, they can spend it themselves, just kind of, it's kind of their money to spend. They have the authority over it.
So there is a revenue source?
Yes, there's a revenue source, and, and his, his DDC fund, he's got, as of whatever the date this is printed, there's no date on it, but it's about $2,800. Then the security funds are all lumped together. Security and technology are lumped together, and the JPs can ask for something, and we can approve it. We're, that money, we control like Fund 10 money. It's by us. They can, they can request it, and if we have money and we want to fund something, we can out of those, but it has to be very specific things that you can spend it on. Like technology, it has to be related to technology. Now, all of them, I think, have training in it, but it has to be training for that specific fund.
So it can cover that aspect?
Yes, right. That's the, my understanding of the theory of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Judge, I have no right to respond to that, but may I?
Sure.
Okay, I, I know you, thank you. I appreciate it. The DDC fund that, that I have is used for, just like he said, anything we want. It has been used for putting carpet in the building when there was no building funds available for painting, for putting up walls. My use of it is for jurors. They come in to sit on a jury. I buy the water myself, but if, if there is a lunch hour, I bring lunch in for those jurors. That's what I would use my DDC fund for, but I'm not getting those numbers anymore, Judge. I have no idea what I've got in my DDC account or not because it's not being sent to us, nor is the technology fund, nor is the security fund or anything else. I have no idea what's available, which is why I leave it in Judge Stovall's capable hands, but if the DD fund is going to be used, I have to approve it.
I'm not your accounting department.
No, you're not.
So you, you can do the, either call the auditor's office or you can call my, Bernice in my office now.
Well, you told me to email you directly, and I do.
That's fine, Clay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Celeste, why don't you come do yours next? I don't want you to sit here all day. You got, you may. Yeah, so you can go, go back to work.
All right. My name is Celeste Prather. I am here representing the Child Welfare Board today. So I'm, I'm going to not waste your time and move on. So how many of you are familiar with the Child Welfare Board? All right, yay. All right, so what I thought I would start with is just kind of what the, some of the responsibilities are. So these are outlined in the, on the Texas Department of Family Protective Services website, which outlines what our responsibilities are. So some of the responsibilities are foster care funds for children not eligible for state or federal foster care funds. That's. Clothing and transportation. Very often when kids are removed from their home, they're removed with the clothes on their back. So when they go to a relative placement, or a foster home, or whatever, we make sure that they have some clothes to go with them, you know, they're not just being dropped off in their pajamas or whatever they were moved in. Medical care and examinations, again, not covering, not going to some of that. Psychiatric and psychological evaluations, office space utilities, equipment upkeep. We do very little of that. Funding for staffing, we do not do that. Onto the next page. It talks about just kind of oversight assessments, how we monitor the budget, how we spend our funds, how we watch what we're spending, and we're not, you know, we're very careful with the funds. So go on to the next page. I wanted to show you a little bit about our process. So on the left-hand side, I'm on this page right here. On the left-hand side, that is an actual copy of the digital link when a CPS person is requesting something. So if it's investigations, that needs something for a child that they're working with the family, and maybe they're not being removed, but the kids need something to remain in the home. So they enter this link, they enter the information. Some of the questions we ask is, number one, has your supervisor approved this request? So that we don't just have random requests coming in. The next thing, we started tracking this, I think, maybe last September, late last year, we started tracking what legal status are the kids. Are they in the investigation stage? Are they in FBSS, which is Family-Based Services, which means the investigation was founded, and CPS is offering services to work with the family to try to keep them safely in the home and not entering the foster care system? Or are they in the foster care system? So we track that. We say, what do you need? What's the approximate cost? We also ask the question, where else have you looked for this? Have you checked with Hunt County Kids? Have you checked with Adopt a Family? Have you checked with other agencies that may supply this without coming to the Child Welfare Board? And then we ask who you are and, you know, when you need it. So then we also developed a request and reimbursement policy. So that way, it outlines, everybody knows what the rules are, so that if the workers need a request, they know how to request the information. If you go to the, this would have been so nice if I was not a nonprofit and had color ink, but I don't, so it's black and white, or gray. So what I did was, this is a year's look, so April of last year to April of this year, our expenditures were $50,001.91. That's a lot. That's a lot of money. So there's a couple of reasons for that, which I'll go into on the next page. But I broke it down into expenditures. So you'll see the first expenditure is Rainbow Room, $12,880. What the Rainbow Room is, is it is, we have two locations, one at Stonewall, and then one up on Lee Street, where when there are needs for a family, diapers, formula, socks, underwear, so when those kids are removed, that's where they go to get those things. So we refurbished that Rainbow Room with needs. Every single month at our Child Welfare Board meeting, we look at the list of what's in the room and what needs to be in the room. So that way, if a removal does occur or assistance is needed, they can go to that Rainbow Room and just grab the stuff there and not have to, hey, can you meet me at Walmart? It's midnight, you know, these kids need clothes. So it's to avoid that, but to keep that Rainbow Room stocked. So about $12,880 went to the Rainbow Room stocking of things. It's shampoo, it's toiletries, shoes, coats, all kinds of things that kids may need as they come into care, or to prevent them from coming into care. You'll see childcare on there. Sometimes what happens is kids are removed, and we try to keep them with family, or kinship care, which is, kinship is defined as past known relationships, should be aunt, uncle, it can be a teacher, you know, it can be whatever. So sometimes they get placed and they don't have immediate childcare supplied, so that the caregivers can keep their jobs, we pay childcare so the kids can, and then they take it over from there. Travel or a move, we don't typically pay for a lot of this. We had an incident probably, I don't know, three months ago where there was a drive-by shooting. I may have heard of it, it was in Commerce. The family, the caregiver was struck, luckily not, you know, not fatal. But also, the child's crib was struck. Luckily, the child was not in the crib, so the family no longer felt safe in that environment. So we did pay to have them moved to another location. It was just a deposit application, that kind of stuff. So we pay just to get them out of there immediately. That's an unusual request, but that did happen. Medical, $8,858. That is, we had a kiddo in Arkansas, in a residential treatment center, so that's a high-need center, that had an emergency dental need. It was a, what do you call that? Root canal? Nobody likes to think about that. Root canal and crown. So we had to pay for that because the state of Texas doesn't pay for that because they are in Arkansas.
How did they get to Arkansas from here?
They're in Arkansas in a special placement because there was not a placement in Texas available to take that child.
Okay.
And then y'all support them out of state then, if that's where they?
Medical needs, yes. We also had a child that was hearing impaired, suffered a lot of trauma, and so we had to, we were asked, we didn't have to, we were asked to pay for therapy with a person that was ESL, so that could communicate with the child, in which the child could communicate back with them. So that was quite extensive. But I'm happy to say the child is doing very well and has made great strides. But the state of Texas doesn't pay for that. They'll pay for therapy, but they will not pay for specialized therapy like that. So we paid for that. School supplies, we paid for some of that last year. We are, we have launched a, we've launched a school supply campaign this year already to try to get those paid for. On the next page, you'll see Tools for Schools is no longer available in Hunt County as of this year. So that was a pretty good outlet for us to be able to get school supplies for our kids, you know, and to instill in kids going back to school, the pride of going back in there with the backpack full of the, you know, the crayons and the paper and the folders, just like every other kid in that class. You know, just to, I don't know, just to make them feel like they're, you know, just make them feel proud to go back to school. So we have launched a school supply campaign. Hopefully, we won't have a lot of school supply needs out of this one, but we did spend that last year. Home needs, sometimes what that is, is, I don't know, it can be like exterminations, it can be lock boxes, it can be lots of things. Rent, that was, particularly that one is a little bit higher. We placed an older teen with her very young older sibling, who was 20, and they needed assistance in getting established in an apartment to keep from putting that child in the foster care system. Transportation, that's like passes on the transit around town. Office, that's just some stuff around the office for the two CPS offices here. Training, that's for the workers that go to training, specialized training. A lot of that is the Crimes Against Children Conference that's held in Dallas every August, which is coming up. Really good conference, they learn a lot from it. Appreciation, we spend that on the workers for, they can't receive gift cards, which is what we used to do, so they have to, it has to be a tangible. So we just got them like jackets and little lanyards to keep their badges and stuff in for the workers. And then reimburse costs of $7,000 for expenses that they took on that really should have been Child Welfare Board expenses, so they just ask for reimbursement there. So that is basically what it looks like for us over the past year. Some changes in the child welfare system that might explain some of that is fewer kids coming into care, which sounds like it would be less, which is from House Bill 567, where the definition of neglect rose to immediate danger. So kids are no longer being removed, but it doesn't rise to the level of immediate danger. So more kids are in family-based safety services. We also had community-based care roll out, so that is the privatization of foster care in the state of Texas. It's rolling out in 18 different catchment areas around the state. We got started with it in Hunt County last year. Our case management system is in power. That's been rocky at best. There have been people that went to work at Empower and then quit Empower, and the, any staff turnover, it's been a big mess. But anyway, so we've had to pick up a lot of extra expenses that I believe we wouldn't have had to pick up had Empower, you know, been in place and functional when they first came out. Increase in working with families to keep children safely at home, so investigations and family-based services. And then I already talked about tools for schools dissolving. And then I already talked about last October, we started tracking legal status and casework units. So that way, we can kind of identify where we're spending our money and what department we're spending our money with. Any questions so far? I talk a lot, I could talk about this all day.
Quite a few, but I'll wait till.
Okay. All right. And the other sheet I gave you was, these are your local Hunt County stats. So I highlighted them because that's, to me, a lot of words and very small writing. So the first line that you can see is intakes assigned, so that means, that's how many calls went into the hotline on Hunt County Kids. Your next line is investigations completed. So let's just look at September, because it's easiest to look at. 121 is signed, investigations completed 45, so you know, you're about half that get completed. And then if you go on down to family-based services, so of those 45, you can see that, you know, there were 25 that are in family-based services at the end of the month. But of those 45, only nine were removed from the home. So you can see the numbers of being removed from the home are lower, which was the intent of House Bill 567. That was the intent, to keep kids from coming into the system if they didn't need to. And then the next one you can see on down, I wanted you to pay particular attention to children in sub-care placed in county from this county. So just because Hunt County Kids are removed, doesn't mean they're always placed in Hunt County. So you can see 23 are placed in the county, and we've got 70 placed outside the county. So that means our kids are placed all over the state, and sometimes other states.
Is it just because of the kin folks wherever they live, or whatever?
Foster placements. We have a real severe lack of foster placements in Hunt County. And I think a lot of that also has to do with community-based care, because your providers need to kind of be funneled through Empower at this point, and used to, it was kind of, it's changed a lot over the years, but everybody had their own child placing agency, now it has to go through Empower. So it's, again, a part of the shift, so. And then also, if...
I'm sorry, but we do 90-plus a month placements? Is that what that says?
No, where it says kids in sub-care?
Yes, ma'am.
93, that's total kids in care in September.
It's a rolling number?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah, thank goodness, no.
That's why I was going, what?
So, yeah, nine kids, just nine kids are removed, just nine. I mean, that's a lot. So also, teenagers that come into care, those are harder to place around here, especially if they're high-needs teenagers, because there's not, like what they call our residential treatment centers, RTCs, those are all in the Houston area, just about. So if you've got kiddos that are that age and have high-needs behaviorals or whatever, they're placed in Houston. So it's a pretty good trek to go even see them.
Does that all, it goes to court to do something like that, to place them somewhere, or do y'all have the authority to do that?
CPS has the authority.
CPS, okay.
CPS, or now it's Empower, but they act in the authority of CPS.
Okay.
So anyway, I just thought it might be interesting to see, you know, kind of where the kids are that we're helping. So where it says family-based safety services, you can see all the, and that's at the end of the month, that's a snapshot at the end of the month number. That's primarily the kids who are having investigations. We are working with a lot of kids that are, it says children in sub-care. We do some of that, but it's mostly the older kids. So if we've got older kiddos that are what they call PMC to the state, which is Permanent Managing Conservatorship to the state, the state of Texas is their parent, right? Sadly enough. So if they are having a graduation, or they're having prom, or, you know, they're doing things that normal kids are doing, there is literally no one to provide for them. If they need clothes to start school with, that's where the Child Welfare Board comes into play on those kids as well. So all that to be said is that all of the money that we receive from the county goes directly to the children and families. There's no, while I say that, with the exception of the appreciation for the staff workers. So it's either going, that's a small amount. The bulk of that money goes to the children and families directly through, there's no overhead, there's nothing else that comes out of that, out of that budget. So if you go to the last page, which is the best page, in 2015, the Hunt County Commissioners' Court budgeted $20,000 for the Hunt County Child Welfare Board. Since that time, there have been no increases requested. Today, in 2025, we respectfully request $40,000 annually to be allocated monthly to sustain the current projected needs for the youngest and most vulnerable citizens of your county.
Where does the rest of your funding come from? Is it state, or?
We get some small donations, we get donations, just independent donations, like churches, that kind of stuff. So, yeah.
But that's it?
That's it.
So generally, so in this scenario, from this last year's expenses of 50, we'd be paying or funding 80% of your needs?
Yes.
So, so curious, so making sure that I understand the relationships. So you're not, you're a nonprofit, so you're not part of the county?
We are under Commissioners' Court. We are not nonprofit, we are under Commissioners'.
You are under Commissioners' Court. I thought I heard you say nonprofit, so I was, that's where I was losing.
Oh, because I work for a nonprofit.
Okay, okay, all right. Because that's where I was going.
Me too.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that helps a lot, thank you. So is the, so is the role that you have in the county, is it a requirement to have this role? Is this something we just identified as a need? How did you come to exist? I'm just a guy looking for some background.
So every county in Texas has a Child Welfare Board, so it's part of the DFPS, I guess, plan. And so it is established through the Commissioners' Court, though. And it's been around for, I've been here 25 years in this business.
And I'm not shooting at it, I was just trying to understand how, because I know we have lots of charities that are working, well, charities not, just call them nonprofits. You've got COSA, and you've got the Children's Advocacy and all that. Do you work with them in these scenarios, or is this all outside of what they do?
We actually represent a lot of the same kids. So a lot of the money that we're paying for are also working with both of those agencies in different capacities, but yes, same children, same families.
How many, you call it Child Welfare Board, is, obviously, is there an actual board that governs you guys, decides the court, obviously, with the money, but?
Yes. Yeah, we're a part of the Texas Child Welfare Board. And they come and sit in on our meetings, probably quarterly, and they look over our audits and that kind of stuff.
So when you say audits, so you're highly regulated?
Highly regulated. So we audit, we audit our records. We have a, we have a good segregation, separation of accounting duties, but we also, every summer, get together and we audit the books altogether, so that all eyes are on all transactions.
So this last year, when you went to 50,000, as far as expenses, and we were at 20, is that just pulled out of our general fund? How's that, how do you get covered for the extra?
So we have had, over the past five years, since COVID, everything kind of changed, right? There was, I would say, a surplus in the account, and so, because the removals were kind of down, there was nothing going on. So we have been fortunate enough to have funding in the account, but we see that account dwindle down to, what we don't want to do is get to the point where we have, where they come to us and they say, you know, they need something, and we go, sorry, we can't help you. We never want to be in that position.
You're living off your savings account right now, so to speak.
I wouldn't call it a savings account, but I see what you're saying. And we're looking to just make sure that we, based on past expenditures, and, you know, we expect some of that to decrease. We hope that 50,000, we hope does not happen again. Those were kind of extraordinary circumstances. But we hope that we, like I said, that we never have to just look at a kid and say, I'm sorry, we can't. We had a kiddo come to us that had, she didn't, they brought it to us, and she had been brought into care and had braces on her teeth. Well, Medicaid, CPS Medicaid does not pay for braces. So she had braces on her teeth that nobody was willing to take off because she still, they still owed the orthodontist money, so we had to, anyway, we had to pay to take them off, because you can't leave braces on a kid's teeth. So, I mean, it's just un... But we hope that we, like I said, that we never have to just look at a kid and say, I'm sorry, we can't. We had a kiddo come to us that had, she didn't, they brought it to us, and she had been brought into care and had braces on her teeth. Well, Medicaid, CPS Medicaid does not pay for braces. So she had braces on her teeth that nobody was willing to take off because she still, they still owed the orthodontist money. So we had to, anyway, we had to pay to take them off because you can't leave braces on a kid's teeth. So, I mean, it's just unusual things that you just don't think about that come in, that's like, you know, if we don't, then who? So.
So am I correct to understand, y'all are meeting a lot of the physical needs, welfare needs of the children who are placed in the system or in danger of it, perhaps in some cases, if you reference the utilities and rent assistance for the older sibling. So when a child is removed, and this is just for my education information, when a child is removed, they call you because they see this child needs clothing, this child needs a physical assistance, that sort, that maybe is outside the law enforcement and court system component of things.
Right. So the child, let's say the CPS worker goes out on investigation and determines the child needs to come into care. So the child comes into care and they literally have the clothes on their back. Sometimes they pack clothes, very often they don't. So before they take them to the placement that they're going to go, be it foster or whatever, then they, like, we need three pair of jeans, we need three t-shirts, we need a pair of shoes, you know, that kind of stuff.
Gotcha. And so you're, the needs are primarily being brought to you by CPS?
Yes.
In law enforcement?
All by CPS, yes.
Gotcha. All right, I had some other questions, but they already asked them, so.
Okay.
I appreciate your work with that for our children. It's incredibly important.
Thank you.
She started CASA, too. She won't admit it, but she did, so.
That dates me, that was 20 some odd years ago.
Well, thank you for that, too.
You've had a heart for the kids a long time.
I have, I have.
So the appreciation item on expenditures, that's a, I'm sorry, I know everybody was trying to give you all the accolades that you've earned, but that's, is that for people that volunteer, is that for people that are in the program?
The workers, the CPS staff. I say CPS staff, Empower staff. So it was, last year it was some pullovers with like their logo on it, we had them done here locally, they gave us a really good deal. I mean, we are all, we're all very good, we need a very good deal or we're not doing it. But, and then lanyards for all the workers. And then there was an appreciation luncheon where we paid for the food, and then some kind of little swag bag. It was not a lot, but it was a little swag bag.
So I assume your school supplies, with the other program dying out, you're expecting that to go up from the 2,800?
We have just launched our school supply campaign, and we are anticipating that to be about an $8,000 cost. We have $3,000 already pledged by individuals or companies outside.
So it'll be substantially more than your last year?
If we don't hit our goal, we're very intent on hitting our goal. But if we don't hit our goal, yes, that could go up.
So what do you do to hit that goal? What are the activities that you do?
So we just, we're very new into this. We just launched our Hunt County Rainbow Room Facebook page. We just got the flyers ready, they're gonna, we're distributing those next week to all the churches and all the buildings and stuff, where people can either make a donation to the Rainbow Room, or they can provide, they can sponsor a child for $75 a child, or they can do a $25 gift card. We're trying to make it so everybody can do something, a $25 gift card, which goes directly so the child can go pick out their own backpack like other kids do.
So you do things to raise money, promote, have funds outside the county?
We do.
Okay.
What would happen to these children that are in your program? What would happen to them if y'all, if your program wasn't in place? What happens to those kids?
So what would happen is that they would, it would cause hardships on multiple levels. It would cause hardships, first and foremost, on the kids because they're going into a potential placement without, you know, what they need to even get up and go to the next day. The other thing is, my fear would be, is that more kids would probably come back into care because we do a lot of preventative stuff, a lot of stuff that we do to working with families is prevention. So, I mean, you know, and you look at, what is it, $20,000 would be, I think if you divided that by what you pay an attorney to represent these kids on cases, if they came into care, if you want to take it all the way out, would be about a, I don't know, 100, what was it, 160, 160 hours, maybe? So if those kids came into care and they had to be appointed, both parents get an attorney and the child gets an attorney at $125 an hour times three. I mean, to me, it pays for itself very quickly if we're working in a preventative nature to keep kids out of the foster care system and in the home, it still benefits the county in that way, too monetarily.
So it benefit, this program really, really benefits the children, and then plus the county gets a real good return on its investment.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Celeste, what's your staff count roughly?
No staff, we're all volunteer board.
All volunteer. Roughly, how many is there?
We have seven right now.
Seven?
Seven hardworking, they're required to check their email because when those requests come in, very often, it's, we need this immediately.
All larger than that possibly as well?
For sure, yeah. And they all, you know, we have group texts, I mean, it's a very hardworking board. We had a request come in last week of May for a, it was an FBSS case, so that's Family-Based Safety Services, where the worker is working with mom to try to, you know, keep the kids there to not remove, we're trying, working hard to try not remove kids and help just provide support. Mom was a college student, had a mother of two young toddlers, was having to go to the university to do the, she didn't have a laptop, didn't have a computer. So it was either like, where do I take my kids, can I take my kids' library? So the board decided that that wasn't necessarily an expense that fit our criteria at the time, and so it was denied. Well, two of our board members stepped up and purchased that laptop to make sure that that mom had what she needed. So, I mean, it's like, so it's not like we're looking for money just to pat our own pockets. We pay out money out of our own pockets constantly.
Any other questions?
I was just curious, the problems that you, you don't have to elaborate, just, you mentioned there were some challenges with the Empower startup. Do you think that's taken care of now, or do you anticipate you'll still have issues or costs associated with that?
So, it has gotten better because our district court judges have been very supportive in court ordering Empower to pay certain things. So if it's brought to us, and let's say it's a reimbursement, say something's already been paid out and it's brought to us, we sent one back just last month. It's like, I don't feel like this is a us, I feel like this is a them. And so they take it back and we allow, we ask Empower to first look at it before we get a judge to do it, but then it goes back to the court, and then we let our district judges, if they deem that it's necessary, then Empower pay it, and they've done it multiple times. They court order Empower to pay for things, and so we've started working that avenue, too.
So when CPS gets involved, there's automatically a case filed in the district court?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the time.
All right.
Thank you for what you do, Celeste.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you.
You have a good day.
All right, Richard Hill?
I didn't know whether y'all were going to take a short break or not.
Anybody need a break? We're good? We're good.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. My name is Richard Hill. I am the Director of the Hunt County Homeland Security. And for those of you that are not familiar with what we do, Homeland Security Hunt County was formed in 2010, and that was due to an unfunded mandate by the state of Texas after the legislature met. And it seems like that process hasn't stopped since. The, prior to that, we were the Fire Marshal's Office and Emergency Management. The reason that we got the Homeland Security name in there was because in 2010 was when we were mandated as being over emergency management. Hunt County has 26 federally built dams that are on private property that were built anywhere from the late Eisenhower administration through the 60s and through the 70s. Well, those dams were built, as they were in many other states, before the population increases. So prior to 2010 in Georgia and Alabama, we had failures of these federally built dams, which there was a lot of property loss and a lot of deaths downstream. So the federal government and the state government, the unfunded mandate was, our 26 that are here in Hunt County, you must write an emergency action plan for each one of those dams and keep it up to date and be over the dams. So that's how we came to be. Our department has the Fire Marshal's Office, the Emergency Management Office, the Health Department, medical side, and we are also over, by Commissioners' Court resolution many years ago, the exotic animal ordinance. So I jokingly say, we're over everything that an elected official doesn't want. And we have that, but...
Well, let's think of some more things.
That's an option?
You want the roads, Richard?
I didn't know that was an option.
Because we can't, we don't say no to our bosses, we try to do it. Okay, I want to, if anybody has any questions over that, but the viewers listening and everything, I thought they might want to know that we have nothing to do with the federal government, although the federal government and state government made us do a name change.
Richard, caveat to that, unrelated to what your department, but those lakes that we have, Gary, you've got, you've got one, I think he's got one in his precinct, I think, it's on John Horn's old property, his soil conservation lake. We fund 20,000 to the soil conservation because, like Richard said, state took the money away from them, too. So it takes our local money for them to get match fund, to pay for match grants to repair the dams. So we've had to increase that to, the years, for a long time, the state was doing it, and I think we were funding $500 a year for a long time, and then the state just stopped the funding, and they came for 10,000 for a few years, but then they've had more and more problems with the dams, and so we upped it, I think, last year, year before last, to $20,000 to help with, so they'd have some cash to pay match funding to get their grants.
Okay, interesting.
So you'll see that in the budget, and it's, I think it's under Pilot Grove Water District, I think is it, I think that's what it's under.
When those dams were built, it was a great deal, I'm sure, on private property. It was flood control, erosion control, but nobody thought about, 50 years later, there's been no maintenance. And the ownership of that private land, to add to what you say, may have changed five times, Judge. And of course, last year, we had the very, in Commissioner Hutchins' precinct, we had the very serious problem where we had to monitor, and again, this is a good time to say, our department is 24/7. Even though we don't have somebody that's scheduled for a night shift, we have first out on call, second out on call, and our people, the environmental people, the fire, we cross-train everybody, whether they're in emergency management, the Fire Marshal, and that helps with the staffing when we have the emergencies. Because, of course, the dam problem in your precinct happened over a weekend. And I want to say this about, and I think the judge will agree with me, has very little to do with what I'm talking about, but I don't know what we're going to do when Sam completely retires.
We're in trouble.
He does.
He's got more knowledge than anybody I've seen.
Exactly, and a pleasure to work with and has helped our department immensely. Okay, anybody has any questions about our department or how we staff at 24 hours, the home call first out? We make sure that there's a certain amount of people in the county, in other words, for instance, name-wise, David Alexander or Richard Hill don't leave the county at the same time, unless it might be to run to Rock or cross the line or Rockwall to eat out or something. We maintain close, so we stay that way. On all weather events, we have one person in our staff that loves to get up early, he's like Commissioner Harrison. So I take the late shift on any, on all of our weather events, and I work that till about 2:00, 2:30 in the morning. And then David Jones is an extremely early riser, and he starts after, and we check in, and he gets started. But the first thing I want to talk to y'all about, and I'll try to make this quick, is another unfunded mandate that happened many years ago. Previous speakers were talking about the population. So if y'all see this one sheet in the handout I gave you with all the different percentages of the populations here in Hunt County, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and like I said, this is going to be like Celeste, we'll have to talk about what this is. Basically, for the last 10 years, you have to have a new hazard mitigation plan every five years. For the last 10 years, our COG received grant funding and did the entire work for all our 16 counties. It was a great deal. The work of actually putting the plan together, we, for the last two times, we had a hazardous mitigation plan, we really, we really didn't incur any money, except the COG asked us, here's the information we need, we need you to hold the town hall meetings, we need you to hold the public meetings, we need you to gather all this information up at no cost to any of the cities. If you do not have a current hazardous mitigation plan in effect, and there is a presidential declared disaster in your area, you don't get any money. Mark, you're an X right through it. You get no money.
And that happened, what, 2000?
We had the severe flooding in 2007, one of the first times when, where I changed jobs in the county and came onboard with Judge Stovall's Emergency Management Coordinator, and we were, worked with all the entities in Hunt County and Hunt County and received a lot of federal money due to that flooding. It worked out really, really well for us. And Judge Horn commented, he said, well, we got a baptism by fire when we started, and that's the way it worked. So, yes, it, and then, of course, during prior administrations, when we actually should have had some presidential disasters, we didn't get them.
And typically on that hazard mitigation, most cities fall under the county's plan to incorporate them so they can get their funding.
One big plan. One big plan. And hate to, I've got to mention it, because five years ago, we had, even though it was no money, we had Celeste, Hawk Cove, and Union Valley that didn't participate. And so if something would have happened during that five years where we got a presidential disaster, they would have gotten no money.
You're talking about participating, you're talking about them helping us pay the cost?
There was no cost.
There's no cost.
No cost.
What they had to do was submit the information to us. Bring it as a, excuse me, a resolution before their council and pass that they wanted to join the county's plan.
Okay.
Some things like that.
Something real difficult to do.
No money, that's the best thing. And the county hadn't spent any money in the last 10 years, which is good, we did the work.
Just curious, Richard, does somebody approve the plan, or is it just the fact that you have one? Is there a state requirement that says it has to meet certain criteria?
It has to be approved by TDEM, Texas Division of Emergency Management. You send the plan in, and they never send you a letter back and say, you did this plan, perfect, we don't want any changes. That never happens. They always find a few changes and things to do. And this is the hardest part of what I wrote, so I'll try to make this short, but please ask any questions. On this hazardous mitigation plan, you had the lady that worked at COG, that COG got all the grant funding, did it all for us, except what we had to do locally. Well, they didn't do the grant anymore, not COG, but the federal government did away with it. So her position was eliminated at the COG. Now, since she is what I would call an expert on hazardous mitigation plans, she went to work in the private industry for a company that writes these plans. And there is a grant available, and you'll see, from the Texas General Land Office for up to $100,000. We intend to apply, and if we use this company that she works for, they will also assist in the grant writing and help on that. But the plan is going to cost us somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000, it looks like. Now, the reason you've got... Now, the reason you've got this sheet with the population, the 2023 estimate of population for Hunt County and all the cities, being we're going to have to pay money, these other people need to step up to the plate and pay their portion. Of course, that's up to the Commissioner's Court, but here is my percentages of the population. Now, a side note, A&amp;M has, I guess you'd say, mentioned that they would like to participate in the mitigation plan, but the person that told us that has turned in his resignation and leaving and going somewhere else. So I don't know where that'll go, but they have mentioned it.
Now, Richard, with the grant, the way I understand it is, you have to go ahead and pay and have your plan done, then you apply for the grant, and you could get up to a hundred. You may get zero, you may get ten, you may get a hundred.
Exactly right, Commissioner Harrison. The grant from the General Land Office is a reimbursement grant after the fact, after your plan's been approved and everything, they will reimburse. You're exactly right. And the hundred thousand figure is up to, but of course, with our sixteen county COG, and how many other counties and cities are going to be doing this, I can't, anyway, even if we were accepted for the hundred thousand dollar grant, tell you all that we're going to, we might get fifty. You know, I'm sure the pot's just so big.
What drives the cost for the plan? What's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? What do you have to, is it just manpower for writing?
Manpower to write, to write the grant, all the different things that FEMA and everybody stipulates in it, and let me mention this, Commissioner Smith, when I first put this budget together, and we got ours in on time, the first week in May, we just got hit with COG didn't get the money. So when I submitted this budget, I'm giving you very limited information, very limited, and we have gotten more information since. And to answer your question a little further, since the COG has done it the last two times, they sent us a list and said, here's what we need from you, all these different things, and we did it.
Is it just data you've got to get? Just data from somewhere we had to gather up, is what, is that what's?
Yes, data gathered up, and live meetings, you have to have the town hall meetings, have to. And then, you know, you have to talk to the mayor of Neylandville, in other words, the mayor of Wolf City, and you have to get this resolution by all the councils that they want to join with you.
But I see that from a coordination logistics, it's a big effort, but what drives the cost?
What drives, and Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that. I'm trying to find out that now. Since we've never paid for it before, and this is new, what drives that hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar cost from this? And I'm also working, one of the other things is that this money would be divided up between all the entities, and then we're going to get into the procurement process, which y'all are the experts, I'm not, which is fifty thousand dollars, anything above fifty thousand dollars, Mary, you have-
Going to a hundred-
Till nine one, then it goes to a hundred.
Yeah, it goes to a hundred in September.
And so-
If we change, we'll have to change our policy too, I think, to match it.
And so the other part of that is, even though that City of Greenville and City of Commerce, and everybody's going to join in that, since it's a reimbursement grant, is that going to be over our limit, or do we take those people out? That's a legal question, I don't know. If Greenville's going to be responsible for twenty eight point eight percent of the grant fund, grant cost.
But our, if I remember right, our plan doesn't run out until August of-
Twenty six.
August, you can call it July 31st, Commissioner, or you can call it August 1st. We have to have a new plan in progress.
In progress or in place?
In place, excuse me, in place. An approved plan. And Commissioner Smith, I wasn't trying to run around your question, I'm attempting to find all that information now. Why the heck is this so high to hire one?
If they're not requiring you to purchase equipment to support your plan or things like that, I'm trying to figure out, you've hired a consultant to do the writing, that's a pretty steep number-
Yeah.
-for writing of a plan that's already exists, by the way, and you're probably tweaking it.
And I certainly agree with you, I certainly agree with you. And I wished I had more information, but for the last ten years-
Richard, is this something that someone in the Emergency Management Coordinator's office could essentially function, take the lead on, and we wouldn't have to hire a grant writer?
Okay, to answer your part of the question, we've been told by the lady that used to be at COG, that's now with somebody else, the more work that we do, the more writing that we do, we can bring the cost down. In other words, instead of two hundred, if we do X amount, it's going to be a hundred and fifty. If we can do X amount, it's going to be a hundred thousand. But we haven't, in other words, these people are a little bit, oh, I guess, and there's more than one company, they're a little bit, they're not going to give you all the information until they win the bid, so to speak. And they are supposedly putting us, I've asked for a proposal from them, which I can share with all of y'all.
Is the whole state under the same five-year rotation, is, or is this just our rotation?
Our area, this COG-
The sixteen counties are all together?
Yes.
But you don't know about the rest?
But I don't know the answer to, Harris County's expiring this year, or next year, excuse me. I know that our area, our sixteen-
I didn't know if it was a mandate at first, whenever it started, if there was a mandate had to be done by a certain date, and then it was good for five years, so everybody's on the same five-year cycles, what I was questioning.
And so in this request, when we originally did the budget, I believe we asked for twenty five thousand. But we, that was back the first week in May, and we've gained a lot more information, and I'm pushing these people to get us a whole packet put together. Here's what you'll do for this price. If you do these things and furnish this and write this, here's, to break it down.
So the current one that we have that's good till August of next year, it's in our possession, correct?
Yes.
And it's what we said we would do in the event of, you know, hazard, this is how it would play out, right?
Right.
So is there, is there something going to be significantly different for the next one in an update?
Twenty five thousand more people.
Yeah.
Could we just modify the one we have ourselves? Or who has to actually write it?
TDM. TDM makes that decision, and then it also goes through FEMA to be approved by the state and the federal government.
TDM approves whether our modifications are adequate, or TDM writes it, or TDM approves?
No, TDM approves it, they don't write anything.
Right.
In other words, it's like going to the court and say, I want to sue somebody, would you write this suit out for me? No, TDM doesn't do any of the work. They just tell you what you did wrong, and what they need you to improve on. And even with the COG, they came back, we had to make, changes had to be made. So I don't have nearly all the information that I'm asking for to get to y'all to make an approved decision, but I think that, I would hate to see the county not have a hazard mitigation plan, and then something happened. And I would hate, and we pushed the last time, Commissioner Hutchins, for everybody join in with this, it's not costing you any money. We kept saying that the last time, and we still couldn't get a hundred percent participation.
Obviously, this is up to your Emergency Management Director, but I think we need to go ahead and probably start talking to some of these cities and see who's interested and let them know, if they want to be a part of it, obviously, it's going to cost something this time. A little too early to come up with costs, but I think we need to go ahead and start having those talks as well. At the end of the day, we're going to have to pay something to be able to have a current mitigation plan.
We're going to have to get on the road pretty quick, everybody's doing their budgets right now.
Yep. And I've already, I've spoken with city manager, Cato Mills, the new city manager, spoke with the city manager at Quinlan, and told them that, please find time where I could meet with them and try to get this thing going. I'm hoping that we could get the hundred thousand dollar grant, is what I would hope for, and then possibly do a lot of the work and maybe have the forty or fifty thousand dollars that you divide up among all these cities right here, which would really keep- we intend to do as much as possible to hold the cost down when they tell me what those things are.
So from a protection standpoint, right, in the event of a hazard and where the government funds help, how do the unincorporated areas, so you were talking about the cities to help bear, carry the burden, but at the time of a hazard, how do unincorporated areas benefit from this? Do they get covered as well?
They get covered as well, and that's where we're responsible for holding the town hall meetings and gathering the information up on everything unincorporated. And then, of course, we're going to assist the cities, and we're going to work with them, and we'll have to be the receiver of the paperwork and make sure that it gets done and things like that, especially with your smaller cities.
Yeah, Greenville Commerce, Cato, Quinlan probably can help a lot with it, the others we're probably-
Hopefully the university too.
Yeah, and the university, yeah. And then the smaller cities, they normally don't have a manager.
Right.
Or if they do, it's part-time or something, so.
And that's the reason we made a list of the cities and the percentage of population and things like that for you. But I'll be bringing, as the information comes in, and COG just found out the first of May that they weren't going to get the grant. So that's the reason I stuck this in the budget without much knowledge.
Okay.
All right. The, my other only notes on any, you don't want to hear about anything but the increases, do you? Is that correct?
Yeah, just-
You don't want me to go down line by line?
No, 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 just the increases in your salary request.
Okay.
The training request is, you know, pretty clear, and then what we've just been discussing.
Okay.
I think the rest of it, we're okay.
On the training for the whole entire department, we asked for an increase from five thousand to seventy five hundred, and Commissioner Smith, on this deal, we haven't spent that much this year, we chose not to go to the state TDM convention. The lady that is now our Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, which is, I guess, in preparation for my retirement at some point in time, and is doing a great, she came on about the first of February, and didn't, which she had great knowledge with emergency management, working, used to work for TDM, so that was very good, that we were able to get somebody. So that's the reason I asked that. She said next year she would like to go to the statewide conference. I haven't been, I got out of the habit when COVID started, we spent about twenty-two, twenty to twenty-two months here doing nothing but COVID, it seemed like, so I didn't go, and I haven't been since.
So you're saying she has a lot of knowledge of hazard mitigation plans?
She has a lot of knowledge on emergency management. She's never written a mitigation plan, Commissioner. None of us ever have, because we never had to. Yeah. But if she-
And she didn't approve them when she was at TDM.
If she was an expert on the mitigation plan, which I'm glad that she's not, she probably wouldn't be working with Hunt County right now. She'd be with one of these agencies that are doing them all over the state. That's what I'd say. But as again, all right, and the only other thing that I have on here was approximately two years ago, in the county ranks in law enforcement and things like that, there was, in other words, an equalization, and about two years ago, it got off with us, so I have asked in your budget notes for three of our department to be equalized. We got the other people equalized last year, and so that's the reason for this statement there. So there's only three things, the salary equalization, the training, and the miscellaneous expense, which I don't have good, a good cost for y'all. Here's a way to look at it, I've been told that two hundred thousand is the top limit, so it's going to be something less than that.
All right.
Do y'all have any questions?
Yes, sir, a couple.
Yes, sir.
So just bumping up to your cleanup and tire disposal, I was just wondering, do you need the commissioners to help you spend a little more this year?
And let me, I'm glad you-
You're running pretty light against a twenty thousand dollar budget.
Okay, our tire cleanup is always in May, Commissioner, okay. This printout that we have on how much we've spent and part-time money doesn't include the tire roundup.
Okay, good answer. It's a good answer.
It doesn't include it, but that's just the way the timing is. Now, on another thing, you'll see here where we have emergency containment and cleanup, and we don't spend, I would love to have a year, ten years in a row where we never spend that money, because that's a hazmat spill, that's what we would have to take care of. We are really big in our department, if there's a hazmat spill and we're called out on it, somebody calls that hazmat spill, unless it was a county truck or something, and let's hope that never happens. But we looked, when I go out to the scene, or any of our people, and they're trained, they look for who's got the biggest checkbook we can put the cleanup on.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm proud to say that we've never cost the county a bunch of money on that, if it's a truck, if it's a railroad, if it's different, whoever it is, you know, but sometimes somewhere, somebody's going to have one and going to drive off, and we're not going to have a suspect there when we arrive. Our luck's going to run out.
The other one that I had, and is just when I go look at the history, so miscellaneous expense is always difficult, right, to figure out. When I go look at your actuals in twenty-two, three is zero, eighty-two dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four, you have a budget this current year of twenty-five hundred, you've got no actuals spent year-to-date, but you're asking for twenty-seven thousand dollars for this next year.
Okay.
So that's a pretty big jump. Is there something that is coming?
The legislature just met, and what we do, we all think came out of that legislature, unfunded mandates. One of the newest ones is the STEERS program that we're going to have to start. The STEERS program, which I don't really know how much to put in here for this, we're just finding out, getting all the information, there's going to be a statewide database, and everybody, if you are a special needs patient, if you have needs of any way, you register on this statewide database, okay? That you're on oxygen machine, or you're on insulin and all those things. Then when an emerg, it doesn't have to be a federal disaster, when any type of emergency happens in your county, we, Emergency Management Department, have to make contact with these people if they're on the database. Now, the state did not write up, and we're going to have to have our own policy, in other words, do we make one phone call to their cell number, they didn't answer, forget it? No, I don't think that's, do we make three phone calls before we send a live person out there? We're going to come up with a policy because all this is new. But when that person calls in, and if we get to talk to them, or we're at their residence, and they say, you know, and say it's an ice storm, and they say, I can't run, I'm running out of my bottle of oxygen, my oxygen machine, there's no electricity, I need to either go to a hotel, or I need to get a generator out here, or I need medicine or whatever, it's one of those deals, there's got to be a little money in a bucket somewhere to make sure we can take care of that. Now, we're going to ask the Red Cross, we're going to ask our church-based charities and everybody for help, but we're going to have to have a little bit there to think about.
So who's going to be responsible for getting the data in the database? The individuals, or we are?
No, no, that's the only good part about that, Judge. Each person will have to register theirselves, or be registered.
And then, so we don't need, we won't have to buy any software- And then, so we don't need, we won't have to buy any software or anything, we'll just be going to a state website and.
Right.
See if they're on it. So, if somebody calls you, you'd go to that, and if they're not on the list, then they're not on the list.
Correct, but we've never done that before. If somebody called.
Well, I know, I, I know you're still going to go, but I mean, whether, you know, whether or not they are or aren't is just.
But if they're on that list, we're mandated.
Yeah. Right.
We're on that list, it's mandated, and.
So, if it's mandated, we got to make sure that we have some proof that we've made, we tried to make an attempt.
Yes.
And if they're not on the list, we try to make it everything we can to get it, but we don't have to document as much.
Right. You know, and just we're.
I assume that, this is me talking for you, but I assume that's what would be done.
We're in, we're in the process right now of trying to put a policy together, two phone calls or three phone calls, then you actually go out and check on the person, things like that. And of course, here's one of the fallacies about anything like this. It's not our database, who's going to keep up when someone's deceased? Who's going to keep up when someone moves? That person was outside the city of Quinlan, but now their family's put them in a nursing home in Rockwall.
Right.
But you only have to respond if they contact you correctly, they're in the, and you verify they're in the database.
In the event of an emergency situation, a disaster, or anything that's determined, an ice storm, a tornado, high winds, we have to go on to that database and contact the people in Hunt County. Of course, already spoken with Jeremy Powell, uh, the fire chief here in Greenville, of course, they're going to take care of everybody that lives in, in the city of Greenville. We're working with Chris Bassam, of course, uh, the Emergency Management Coordinator for Commerce, they're going to take care of everybody in the city limits. We're going to be responsible for all the unincorporated area. And I'm sure the, the small cities, in other words, we'll, we'll have to do them that don't have a police department, that don't have anything else, the Neelenvilles, the Union Valleys, things like that.
So, are you going to be required to have an inventory of certain kinds of, I mean, if you think about the ability to respond in, in a case of emergency, you don't have time to go on eBay and order something. So, are you, is there a requirement to have 12 generators or something based on the number of people on the list?
There is nothing mandated by the state as far as having any type of things like that, but we already have some generators. We have some that were bought with federal grant funds, and you'll notice in our budget, we've got a little expense every year to keep those generators up. In other words, you're hoping you don't ever run that generator, but you've still got to do the maintenance and check, and, and we start those generators and, and, and have them serviced once a year.
As part of your hazardous management plan.
Uh, so, that, you know, that's, you don't think about it, but, and we have the generators scattered out through the county, and so it's, that's like a, a job that you better do it, you better make sure they're going to work. And then we have some small generators here. We, in other words, even for, we had this last year when somebody had an accident here in the city of Greenville and knocked the power out to our medical health department. And with all those vaccines that they have for the, a Texas vaccine for children, an adult safety net, where we're able to do all those shots and everything at either free or a low cost for all the kids getting ready to go to school, we had, we had to jump pretty quick then, so we didn't lose any of that.
So, Richard, just to clarify, the state builds a, it's a mandate, but the state builds a system, the individuals are, are responsible to register with it, uh, so, so the 25,000 is just a kind of a, a guess.
You know.
Try, you don't have any information to know what, what number that will be?
Yeah.
So, you're just trying to guess what, what a reasonable number could be?
And if, and if y'all wanted to guess 5,000, I might, I'm hoping we don't even spend five, I hope we don't spend a dollar.
Right. Uh, one other question.
But I want to prepare you ahead of time in case something happened.
Would this program include heat waves and such, you know, air conditioners for elderly and that sort of thing?
No. It's just during the murder, in other words, will it buy air conditioners?
Right, this is for, for your, your ice storms, like you said, tornadoes.
Well, if you got into rolling power averages, that probably constitutes an emergency.
And, and that's why I'm trying to kind of understand how far out the program goes.
Or would you do the, that air conditioner, or would you, we'd try to work with Red Cross, we'd try to work with a faith-based charity, get that person moved to a hotel room. We did that just last week, uh, in other words, we talked, to tell you about what things that we do. I got a call from the West Side Barber Shop, Commissioner. A homeless gentleman, I think it was the one that's been living under the bridge, was having some problems, in other words, had no food, no place to stay, and so the barber called me on my personal cellphone and said, you're the only one I know to call, what can we do? And so, this was, uh, last Friday, last Friday afternoon. So, what we did, we got one of the churches, we didn't spend any county money, but we got one of the churches to help us, because nobody answers their phone after 5:00. None of these, the Salvation Armies, the Goodwills and all those things. So, the church helped us out, and we got that gentleman a room at the Magnuson Inn and got everything, and they were going to make sure he was taken care of for us until these agencies start opening back up on Monday morning. I say this jokingly, but you might, somebody might want to know, how'd they know to call you, Richard? If you don't know my cell number, ask the person next to you. Then that's the way it works. So, uh, I'd love to sit here and talk to y'all. I want y'all to know that I'm very excited about my job, I enjoy the job, our people enjoy their job, we're ready to respond, but I'm sure y'all are tired of listening to me unless y'all have any more questions.
I've got one more.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I appreciate what you do in your department, and please don't take this wrong, but on your, your requesting, on your salary increases.
Yes, sir.
On, and these are just the rough numbers, I didn't do them exact, but like on chief deputy spot, asking for $11,000 increase, a captain spot, you're requesting a roughly $12,000 increase, sergeant's roughly $2,500, and then on your deputies, $200. I'm not saying that you, you don't need it, but that's a pretty substantial jump, and I understand you, you put in there that, uh, we raised the sheriff's department up two years ago. One reason, if I remember correctly, we'd done that is trying to hold, sheriff was having trouble keeping people in his department, and they were leaving because they could go to Roy City, Josephine, all these other surrounding counties and get a captain spot or sergeant, and they're making the higher money. So, we did that to try to level that, that out.
Sure.
Is that, if my memory serves me correct? Well, I, like I say, it's just a hard, it's, it's, it, we're tight this year on budget.
Yes, very.
And I'm not saying that it's maybe not justifiable, but it's just kind of hard looking at it as trying to, that's a pretty substantial amount of money to jump.
And I have asked for y'all's consideration. Of course, to answer your question, the first thing that pops in my mind, since we don't have anybody ever leave in our department, nobody ever leaves, everybody loves to work for Richard Hill.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I can come up with. We, you know, we just don't have anybody leave. Uh, the last person that left our department was Michael Benson, and he ran for constable, and he's already started on his second term now. But I said that jokingly, Commissioner, they, they probably would, will throw darts on me when I'm at my picture.
And I'll probably get darts thrown at me as well.
What I heard is you, you saying they would work for less for the joy of it.
I don't believe I said that, but, but like I said, in other words, we, uh, we have a lot of experience in our office. We, like I said, and it's going to be one thing that I think that, that the judge and the commissioners made a great decision, because I, in other words, everybody's going to retire at some point in time, but the older you are, the closer you get, and we have the, the lady who worked for the state, Sarah Shea, who is, came on like gangbusters and is, is, we're trying to make sure that when some of us depart, that she's going to know everything and everybody in the county and be ready to step right in. But, so I don't want her to learn how to write mitigation grants, Commissioner Hutchins, because I really don't want her to leave.
So, Rich, I, I'd, I'd like to go the opposite of what we've been talking about, because we're always trying to figure out how much do we really have to have, right? If I jump over to your auto liability insurance, you, you had a budget last year of 6290, you spent 6635 this year, but in your requested budget, you have zero.
That's because Sandy does it.
Yes, because it's in yours.
We got to get quotes from.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's in all departments. Anybody's got vehicles.
Okay.
She.
I was trying to give you more money.
Property insurance, that would like for y'all for, your property insurance one, I'm going to tell her what to put in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Got it.
I don't budget any of the insurance or anything like that, so. Any, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for what you do, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
You bet. Thank y'all, and I, I said, uh, it's been a real privilege for my years that I've worked at Hunt County, enjoyed it most every minute.
Don't make this sound like a farewell speech.
Is this retirement or?
We're not, we're not ready for you to go.
Yeah. I've enjoyed most every minute of it, and then I, I know that I, I've spoken, uh, one time, when the Commissioner Harrison asked me to, Hunt County is a great place to work. Our employees need to realize what a, what a good benefit program we have, and it, and it's a great place to stay, and I hope everybody does. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. That's all of the departments, right? I got, I would, I got one other, uh, thing to tell you to, or make you aware of. Uh, Constable Rayan had requested that we furnish firearms to him and his employees, and I talked to the sheriff, since he used to be a constable, and I talked to Valenzuela. Best I can tell, all of them furnished their own weapons in the constab, uh, constables. So, if we do this one, then we're going to have to do them all. So, I think we need, it need to be a policy of what, if we won't even consider it, or he's the only one asking for it, so.
I'd say leave it like this.
I agree, because otherwise, we're going to have to go back and furnish for every other department.
Every sheriff and deputy a new gun.
Well, we furnish them for the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
While the other constables. We don't for like the bailiffs and DA's investigator, CA's investigator, anything like that.
I didn't even think about those.
Yeah, that's going to open it up to all of those.
All of them, yeah.
Sir? Okay.
Security guards?
Bailiffs.
Oh, the bailiffs? Okay.
But y'all do that though, right, buddy? I mean, we don't, we don't.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm saying the county does furnish some investigators.
Through, through your budget? Through their budget? I don't even remember seeing it in there. Of course, it'd be a one-time expense.
We usually do a transfer, an asset transfer, like recent, the most recent, dial log listings.
Yeah. You just transferred the gun over to him to that department?
Transferred to the county attorney's office.
Yeah.
And you did it to others that went to work for constables or became constables? Some of those got transferred over. Yeah. I think, Rich, he said that y'all transferred his. Come to the mic.
Yeah, it's starting to be a microphone conversation.
Some of the officers, uh, wanted to, uh, we retired some of the guns from the sheriff's office. We've switched firearms, and they went with some of the officers, it's transferred to different departments. They, uh, was, was comfortable with their gun, they, they carried it forever, so we've, we was able to transfer it just over to the department.
Okay.
That's understandable versus just giving a department, constable's department, Richard's, whoever it is, a blank check to go buy weapons for all of their, their officers.
We, we switched, we switched here recently because it was, we had guns that I think, uh, well, very, very old, and, uh, armors had changed parts and changed parts, so we, we updated, but we do that because every one of our officers carries the same sidearm. Everything is interchangeable in case of a situation where we all have to use, you know, other, other officers' equipment at, at an emergency.
So, somebody runs out of ammo on a shootout, you, you got the same ammo.
That's same, 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 same ammo, same gun, same, same thing we train with, everybody. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Virginia, you want to come up and do any kind of a presentation? You look like you need to.
Yeah, we haven't heard from you in a while.
Sheriff, before we move on to the guns, was, am I understanding correctly that he was requesting two duty, only, requesting two duty pistols?
I think he said for him and his deputies, and I don't know how many deputies he's got.
I believe he's got two.
Says a total of two, I guess for him and in total of two deputies is the way I read it.
Yeah, this may not be the best budget to do it or ever, I, I certainly, I'm not saying we have to, but, I mean, there is certainly danger in their job, and so I want to make sure they're, they're equipped for, equipped for it, and if we can outfit them all the same weaponry, so they're having the same ammunition, everything else, that might matter to that, so.
Sheriff, the ones you, excuse me a minute.
Sure, go.
Sheriff, the ones y'all are phased out, you still have old ones?
Yes, you still have the ones that are phased out.
So, that, to me, that's, if you're going to do anything.
You consider them safe, operable, and?
Well, we replaced them because they were outdated.
We replaced them because they was outdated, yes, I'm, I'm, uh.
So, that's not something we'd want to do, just continue them. Okay, got it. Just a thought.
We got, we got some, I'll tell you, we got some ten fives, some newer ones, but I mean, we had some, we've got a few, which is new, new, new business.
Okay. Leave it alone?
I, I'm a high, leave it alone. No, not right now.
I'm going to leave it alone for now.
Okay. All right. Anybody got anything else? Any other comments? Anybody, is, anybody checked the phone?
I haven't seen anything come across.
Yeah, seen anything come.
Have you seen anything?
Nothing on, no comments online?
I don't see anything.
I don't think they come in through YouTube, I don't, I don't have the, yeah.
Oh, it does?
They, they come through email.
Okay.
Yeah. Our gen, agendas have a public comment email they can send them to.
That's what I thought it had, okay. Okay, all right. All right, then, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at 10:48.